Ending the regular session of the City Commission for Wednesday, May 15. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here.
Would you all please join me in the flag list?
Congratulations to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we're going to have a special presentation, the Illumination, Illuminate Oregon City Municipal Elevator Light Art Project and the Architect's Concept Design Scheme.
So, I just want to point out, we want to remind you, this is illuminate, not eliminate, illuminate. I keep getting what doing that, and it's illuminate Oregon City. So, today, we've got, actually, Martin Montalvo, your Public Works Operations Manager, is going to present a piece of this first, and then we've got our consultant team of Dow Architecture to present as well. Lloyd's in the audience. I don't know if he has a role tonight, but he's there in strong support. So, as you're aware, Oregon City and Main Street Oregon City received a grant, National Endowment of the Arts Grant, and so Martin's going to go ahead and talk about that, but I did want to mention, it's Main Street, Oregon City and the city, there's also collaboration with Metro, PSU, the Clackamas County Cultural Coalition, and we're, I know you're aware of this project, so others will get another update.
Good evening. My name's Martin Montalvo. I'm the Operations Manager for the Public Works Department. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you what we think is a very exciting project that we're getting ready to undertake for the city. A few months ago, we were recipient of a National Endowment of the Arts Grant for illuminating the municipal elevator. Well, in the process of that, we realized, we really need to clean the canvas. It's been almost 21 years since the last time that endeavor was taken on. So, they asked me, Martin, can you guys take a shot at this? And I said, well, I would probably paint it a horrible color. I have color blindness, so you really don't want me taking it on. So, we said, the best thing to do is bring on the experts. So, we were recipients of an additional grant from our partners at Metro that helped us bring on a really good architectural firm with Dow Architecture that's going to present to you the city's preferred palette that we're going to be utilizing for renovating the elevator in preparation of the art illumination. So with that, I'm going to introduce Joanne Dauley and her partner, David Horsley, from Dow Architecture, that are going to give you guys a run-through with the concept for the renovation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Justice. Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present in front of you tonight. I'm Joanne Dauley with Dow Architecture and my partner, David Horsley, and we're thrilled to be here and also to be working on this truly unique and exciting project. We are actually part of a larger team. We're the architects consultants, and we also have on our team, who, they're not here tonight, but Peter Major Architects, our historical resource consultant, Biella Lighting Design, Ray's Engineering for the electrical and lighting, electrical portion, and then also Architectural Cost Consultant, who did a schematic cost estimate. So, that's our team, and I'm going to turn it over to David to talk a little bit about the, your elevator. For us, we wanted to spend just a little bit of time to go through the historical context of this elevator because it informs us on our recommendations for exterior painting, lighting, and signage.
Like my partner, Joanne, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, not only to be here, but to work on this project. It's a fascinating piece of architecture, a piece of history for your city as well as for all of Oregon, and as a matter of fact, for all of the Western Hemisphere. There are very few municipal passenger elevators anywhere, and of course, you have yours here. The history of it is, the original structure was built in 1915. We try and ground all of our work, even though it's, even though we feel that it's timeless and of the present and future, we always try and tie it to the past. So, we've tracked down the older images of the elevator, the original version, which you may or may not be completely familiar with. And then, the newer version, which emerged in 1955, which brought the entrance over closer to the bank and going underneath the tracks through the elevator. And then, next. And you can start to see really just how fundamental it is to Oregon City and particularly this nexus point right in, at the heart of the bank, at the lower end, as well as bridging the top of Singer Hill, the McLaughlin Promenade, the Creek Falls right beside it, the fundamental aspect of the railroad moving through town. All of these are aspects that we try and tap into with our work. Our work is really relatively simple in that it's about paint color, lighting, and signage. Yet, at the same time, we work on a lot of small but very critically important projects that try and have an outsized impact to a relatively small financial entity. So, that's really what we're trying to do here.
So, at the start of this project, because as you know, it's very fast, we need to come up with recommendations fairly quickly so that the exterior painting can be done by the end of the summer and again, prepare the canvas for the artist. And our project oversight team was great in helping define some of the project goals and priorities so that we're all on the same page. And we listed them here to share with you that the four priorities in this order are creating a dynamic 24/7 appearance of this structure, respect the mid-century modern historic nature of the elevator, and ability to serve it as, serve as a canvas for the artist, the artwork, and then consistent with the budget, budget funds at about $100,000. So, that was our charge. This is from the artist Tiffany Carbonell's proposal. I understand she's coming next month to start on the project, so that's very exciting.
That's very exciting.
So, these are images of the existing elevator, and some of you may know, this is what it looks like in the evening, quite iconic at night as well, but as you can see, we'll discuss this a little bit later on when we go to our preferred alternative scheme, is, this is a night lighting. You can see essentially four different colors of light at the structure, so we'll try to improve upon that. Our scope is primarily just the exterior, so we just want to show you, this is the overall, the tunnel entrance, the elevator shaft, the observatory deck. This is what you see from the outside. These simulate neon lights along the ceiling of the observation deck. This is the entrance into the upper deck portion with Michael Asbill, I believe, the artist artwork. And then, this is the entrance, the elevator entrance at the tunnel level. And this is at night, so we wanted to highlight, this we feel is quite iconic and historic, but it is quite bright. Again, a very yellow tone of the lighting at the tunnel and then at the shaft. These are the existing conditions. So, we want to briefly go through the historic period of architecture, so just bear with us because, as David says, all of this really helps inform us to come up with a appropriate response to the paint palette and the lighting solution. So, this, your elevator, when it first constructed, the newspapers called it extremely modern, and it is very modern. It's considered a mid-century modern, built in the mid-'50s. And modernism is actually quite a long period, and it started with international style in pre-war Europe. So, here are a couple examples of buildings from that period where you can begin to see the unadorned nature of the buildings, very spare. In Europe, there were a lot more rectilinear forms, and then it moved into using more organic shape forms. That was in the 1920s and '30s, and then in America, in mid-'50s, these are examples of the Guggenheim by Franklin Wright in New York, and then the TWA Terminal in, at Dulles. And you can see, this is, this is modernism embracing technology and the use of thin-shelled concrete. These advances in materials have allowed architects to use more curvilinear, organic forms, similar to the Oregon City elevator. And this, and, and then you, it moved into what we called, it's not really a movement, but it's called Googie architecture, and that started in, mostly in LA and Southern California, but it was starting to use aerodynamic, space-age, atomic forms as part of the architecture. Again, it's quite unadorned, very aerodynamic in terms of forms. And some of these you recognize, this is a Lautner House, very similar to the elevator, expression of the shaft, and the entire house really is the, the observation deck. This is actually a bank in Missouri, the interior built at about the same time, maybe 1950, and this interior, and I wanted to highlight what they've done with neon lights on the interior. And these are some lighting examples. What we found out is, to be true to the mid-century modern lighting, you can see, there isn't really, there's, the light source is often hidden, and what's important to highlight the ceiling surfaces, the structure, the piers. This is obviously not mid-century, this is the tram in Portland, but we wanted to show you an image of use of color, but again, you can't see the light sources. And in terms of signage, this is a Pavilion Bethlehem Steel, but you, there was a post-war design, there was an embrace of forward thinking, of looking toward technology, and every, all the signage, the furniture, the light fixtures, the letters, they all really expressed kind of clean line and modernism. So, what we were trying to capture is essentially a spirit of the time. It was a time of optimism and looking toward the future, and we think that the elevator really displayed that, and let's revitalize and capture that period. So, this is our, we had come up with three alternatives, options, presented to the project oversight team, A, B, and C, and it was decided that this, this preferred alternative was the best solution for the elevator, and we call it the Silver White and Blue in that it, it's a modest but elegant and interesting material and color scheme for this elevator. And we're going to show you some renderings on daytime views and nighttime views, but the paint, the paint colors are not exact in the rendering, so David's going to pass around actual paint samples of what we're thinking of, which will give you a better idea, so please pass it around.
It's extremely difficult to render silver.
It is.
So, our idea is a pretty simple palette. If we can repaint the base, the entrance, as silver, and the observatory deck also in silver, and paint the elevator shaft in white, which, which is a neutral color that also works for the artist. She preferred either a white background, a silver, or a very light gray background that works the best with video. And this color scheme works well for us because it, in some ways, even though it's modern, it does have this tripartite classical notion of base, middle, and top, so we wanted to highlight that. This is a view from the upper entrance, and the observatory deck would be painted in all silver, but we're suggesting to add a certain level of detail is bringing the white. So, I don't know if you can see, some of you might have to turn around, but a white ring with a very mid-century graphic shape. It's a simple move, but it does add another level of detail to that.
Excuse me, if you use your mouse, they can see the movement of your mouse.
Oh.
There you go.
There we go.
Thank you. Was I giving you a headache? This is a, this is a night view, and you can see, again, in reiterating this, the two entry points of the elevator, the base and also the observation deck, is, we would, we suggest just washing the slightly curved wall, the entrance, with a blue hue, taking, taking cue from your existing blue lights up here, although we would suggest installing a dimmer system in order to reduce the brightness and get the two levels, let's see if I can get my mouse to work here, get these two levels to be the same in intensity, and it begins to give you more of a uniform holistic look. Currently, there is one floodlight here on this pole, which seems to work well, except that it leaves all of this sod in shadow, and we would suggest mounting another floodlight here, and it gives it a more even wash along the front of the elevator. And then, in terms of signage, our recommendation is to remove the current signs, which are the three-dimensional letters, although they're small, you can't, you can't see the sign, and they're glued or just mounted directly on the face, the concrete face. We would suggest using a modern font, this is called a Neutraface font, where there are three-dimensional letters that sit about two inches away from the surface of the wall, thereby giving it more of a three-dimensionality, you can see here, and also creating interesting shadows. And each letter would, similar to the current letters, be inset in each panel, in the way that it was really meant to be, and the letters will be at least 12 inches taller, or 12 inches tall. We think this is, is an elegant, it's a brand, but it's also identifying the entrance into the tunnel. This is a nighttime view. There will be a custom aluminum metal cap along the top that would hide an LED light to wash, to give it a subdued wash along the top of the wall. And this is a close-up. We, for clarity, we did not show the, the big yellow street. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, gosh. That was for clarity. It's still there. Thank you. We realize it needs to be there, it's dangerous, but we wanted you to be able to see into the tunnel. The other recommendation we would have is, it's currently not in the budget, but if we can't replace these light fixtures, which give a very yellow glow, and it's not in keeping with the rest of the elevator, at a minimum, we would like to be able to relamp the existing fixtures to get it more of a green, sorry, a white light. And we're also not showing your current benches. It's not in our scope, obviously, but we're also showing this just because, in terms of modern street furniture, our thought is, if it were more rectilinear without backs and curves, that would be more in keeping with the period. So, that concludes our presentation. We're, again, we're very excited about this project, and, is it? Any questions?
I guess I'll ask one. Maybe somebody else is on the list here, too. The, Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
I have a whole page. This is awesome. Love this, I love hearing these reports, and I love seeing the detail behind it, and I'm an art teacher, by the way, so that also, the visible pieces that you talk about, I think are great. So, in the, from the pink to the blue to the silver, I think the color scheme's great. I assume, I think, I don't know if the bridge was looked at. The bridge, the bridge itself is a different time period, but I don't think this, this color scheme just detracts from the color scheme necessarily of the bridge, so I think it complements each other, which I think is very crucial. I, the exterior lining, I think is brilliant. I think you're right about the dimmer in terms of the lights on the viewing deck and having that be consistent with the lighting on the entryway. I think that the lettering, one, the problem with the elevator at night is that entrance way, and you can't see it, you can't see the signage on it, so people don't, you know, really necessarily know what the heck it is sometimes, so I think the signage helps. I think the font is right. I think that, so what I, what you're doing with the topography on the front of the, the front of the elevator, I think is, is great. The, to what degree are we going to, and I guess this may not, this may be a city question, but, to what degree are we going to recover that surface? The problem I have with the entryway of the elevator right now is, at one time, those lettering, the lettering was taken off, and when they took the lettering off, they put the new lettering on about four inches above the old lettering, and you can still see where they ripped the old lettering off for the signage and put the new lettering on. I don't want to see any signage going on that elevator until the whole surface is smoothed out and you don't see that repair, it's really bad, and it's really ugly and it's really detracting, so when we put the new letters on the front of the elevator, there needs to be some repair work on that facade. And thank you for the freaking arrows. The arrows are god-awful, and I know I never sent an email to Public Works about it because I would hear about it, but it's horrible. It's horrible, and the first day, so I kind of went off about it and to myself.
He doesn't always go off to himself, I think.
It's horrible. Not only is it horrible, I think that the flower plant, the, you know, in the rest of downtown, that entrance way, if you're going to spend the money to make the elevator look right, it needs to be done right, and a big eyesore right in the front of it is not probably the best way to do that. So, I don't know how we tackle that in a way that, that intersection is not the easiest to understand now that we've changed it, and so how do we tell people that they can make a left and a right, but that the people coming this way are, so I understand the problem. So, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, how do we, how do we resolve both situations with that, that front entryway? And I think the same question would be for the benches, because I think, you know, if you're going to go to the detail on that elevator, the benches and everything in that front entryway needs to be considered with the whole design of the elevator, and I think you're right on, on that. So, I appreciate the detail that went into this, and I think somehow we need to figure out a way that the amenities in the front of the elevator still, you know, direct traffic the right way, and it's safe and everything, but that it fits what we're doing with the rest of it, because if we, if we just do it partway, it doesn't work. So, I just think this is a great, it's very well done, very well done.
Commissioner Pauli?
I echo what Rocky said. I'm all for, I'm a big one for utilizing our existing resources and enhancing what we have, and I think that this plan really does that. I like the blue-white-silver colors, I feel it simulates the water that we have around us, and I think it's very complimentary to the surrounding. The backless benches, I think, is great because you can see the lines coming all the way down then, when nobody's sitting on them, and I'm, I'm fond of mid-century architecture, and I think that the colors and the letters, the way they're three-dimensional, really highlight the architecture of the building, so, great job.
I've got a question, and that question is, as you were indicating, having, I guess, something like floodlights on both sides so you didn't get the shadow, how do those work in conjunction with a lighting show?
The art show?
Yeah.
We, the artist is just beginning her process, and, but we know that we will be coordinating with her in terms of, we have an engineer, electrical engineer on board, and we need to find out from the artist and the city when the show will be on. Currently, we're not sure on the hours yet, so we're designing for architectural lighting, and so therefore, when her show comes on, we would control, have the controls turn the architectural lights off, unless she sees some portion that would be beneficial to her piece, so, we will be coordinating with her.
We work a fair amount with artists. We really like working with artists, and we're looking forward.
We're looking forward. There is a little of that. Thank you. We're all excited about this project.
Very excited.
Excited about it.
Thank you.
The Main Street program, getting things of this nature moving for us and so forth is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time now for citizens' comments for items not on the agenda. Anybody can speak up to three minutes, and just looking over here, we have Patrick Boland and William Gifford, please come forward.
Bright light.
We only have bright and brighter.
Bright.
I just found out, we don't really have dim and dimmer. Or dimmer. I knew that was coming.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
It is Oregon City, right? Bright and bright.
My turn? All right. I just came from the Clackamas Cove, where we started our Wednesday night swims, which we've been doing for the last four or five years.
My name is Patrick Boland. I live in Oregon City. I'm a small business owner. I pay my taxes, I use your schools. I did everything right, and I have nothing but good news for you tonight. Okay, so, we've been, I've been leading open-water swims down there on behalf of the Portland Triathlon Club down there for four years. When we first started, there were two or three of us. Tonight, right now, I'm so delighted to tell you that there are 32 people in the water swam. So, I'm glad to be here. 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 swimming in the Clackamas Cove. All wet-suited triathletes ready to rock. And many of them will be participating in the Clackamas Cove Triathlon. And as the leader, when we were swimming out there last year, I thought, somebody ought to do something about that, because there aren't enough triathlon venues in Oregon, in Oregon, but certainly in the Portland urban area. And I can tell you that that cove that you've got out there, take care of it, because it is the best open water venue for swimming and kayaking and multi-sports, because boats can't get into it very well, and it's beautiful and calm and clear. And so that's why we're having a, and then with the participation of the City of Oregon City for the use of Clackamas Cove and the park, the Clackamit Park, we're going to have an awesome event on June 23rd. A triathlon, just to let you know, is swim first. We're going to swim out of the cove down to Clackamit Park, then we're going to bike, we're going to bike up Clackamas River Drive. Now that you put in that cool new bridge in front of Home Depot, we can go under the highway and not disrupt traffic, take it up into Carver, and after 12 miles, we turn around and then we come back down as a race. And then they run Palmeau back into Clackamit Park, and then we start running. And with the help of the Mount Hood Tourism District, we got a grant for a couple thousand bucks to pay for traffic control so that we could run downtown. We could run up the bridge and back down the bridge, and we can run into the tunnel that we were just talking about, and we could run up the grand stairs. And it sounds brutal, but triathletes love that kind of thing. And then run back to the park where we finish with food and fun that's mostly sourced from downtown Oregon City businesses. Because I live here and we ought to, I know people are always begging to come downtown. Well, here, I can do that. So I just want to let you know that's what's going on. I've been working a lot with John Lewis to get all the permits. There are, it's been a civic experiments, experiment?
Was it a civil one, too? Was West Lynn civic?
For the most part. Only, just as long as I was on the phone, right? After I hung up the phone, 10 minutes of craziness, and then we're back in business. So, yeah, but that, and with the county, and also, it looks like West Lynn is going to have a little piece of the action, too. And ODOT, because it's their bridge. So, and their intersection at the bottom of the bridge. So anyways.
That's exciting.
That's going to be an exciting weekend. Is that Thursday or something?
It's on a Sunday morning.
Twenty-third is on that.
Sunday morning.
This is June 23rd?
June 23rd. And that's because traffic is sleepy, and it's easier to get stuff done.
The Oregon California Trail Association, shortly thereafter, is going to be down at the interpretive center finishing up their major program, so it looks like it's going to be an active period there.
That's great.
It's great.
We're expecting about between 250 to 300 participants in our first year, which will make us one of the larger triathlons in the area. The largest by far is the Portland Triathlon. It's six years old and has been sold out last year at 900. It runs out of Cathedral Park in St. John's. And I think that if we can see 250 to 300 participants this year, then in the next year, we'll easily grow by 25, 30 percent, because most of this is word of mouth. And I started planning for this after the season was over in 2012. So, but, and that venue of Clackamit Park can hold up to 1,000 for a race of this size. And a lot of people are signing up because it's close to town. And this is a great way to highlight Oregon City.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
You said you're going to be swimming out of the cove to Clackamit Park. Does that mean you're swimming in the Clackamas River?
One of my favorite topics, yes.
Isn't it kind of shallow there?
Well, so there's a spillway. Clackamit, the Clackamas River feeds the Clackamas Cove. And so depending on the tide, water's flowing in or out of the cove. Late in the summer, you have to walk over the rocks, and I've done that. But early in the summer, late spring, there's probably enough water there, maybe four feet worth of water to swim through it. That's why it's on June 23rd. The water can't be too cold, the water has to be high enough, and I have to have an outgoing tide on Sunday morning. June 23rd is my baby.
I see. That's because we kayaked last year and there was no water.
Yeah. Well, we call it an adventure triathlon.
This is very cool. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much for undertaking this. This is a great way to highlight our city's natural resources. And I'm looking forward it to being an annual event, lots of tourism possibilities here, too.
I basically saved up my own money to make it happen, and I'm way too far in to say this is going to be a one-year event. I'm doing all the work.
Thank you.
That's great.
That's great news.
If citizens like you, it's wonderful. Thanks.
Yes.
William?
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon Thank you very much, my bearded brother over here. I am so excited about that. And I just want to, I'm sure that there are rumors flying out there that I will be competing in this triathlon. I want to dispel those rumors. I will not be, I will not be competing in this, although I will be rooting you on. That's great. On another subject, and certainly a more serious subject, I need to point out why the, why City Hall's flags are at half-staff. Today, in the middle of Armed Forces Week, today is specifically dedicated, May 15th is the National Day of Peace Officer Memorial Day. And to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, is I believe that we've only lost, thank God, only one police officer in the line of duty in Oregon City in all of our history, and I'm grateful that it's that, that's, I'm sorry that that happened, but that we only have one. But the fact that Oregon City is recognizing National Peace Officers Memorial Day, I salute the city for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the adoption of the agenda, actually, our city recorder has requested that 8H, which is one of the sets of minutes, be pulled. There's something that needs to be corrected in that set of minutes. Does anybody else have any issues that need to be dealt with at this point? With that, we will go ahead and adopt the agenda. Under the public hearings, transportation system plan update, and associated amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. And we'll be going to our designated person, Tony Cockle.
Actually, I'll take this one again. Tony gets all the fun.
Sponsors, that says here, Community Development Director, Tony Cockle.
It does.
It's definitely a joint effort. I tell you this, TSP has been a challenge. And Tony and his group, including Laura and Christina, have done an amazing amount of work. So, especially through this legislative process. As an engineer, I'll tell you, I understand why I've been avoiding planning most of my life. We have a deal. John gets to bring you the good news, I bring you the other.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to bring forth some speakers, which I will introduce. Carl Springer is from DKS is going to take the lead here in just a moment and go through a TSP presentation. This is the first public hearing on this. It's not the first meeting, though. So there will be some repeat information and some maybe that you haven't seen. I'm going to talk a little bit more about mobility standards and kind of how we see that playing out. We've got Gail Curtis here from ODOT, who's going to talk a little bit about how the process worked between ODOT and the city. And Steve Kautz is in the audience from Trimet, so he's going to talk a little bit about that. And then Pete Walters, which I don't see. There he is, back there. He's going to talk about geologic hazards. The other thing I wanted to do was just put a shout out to our technical advisory team, which consisted of mostly professionals in the industry that were familiar with the technical aspects of a transportation system plan. Our stakeholder advisory team, which consisted of a lot of citizens and a lot of dedicated effort there. Our transportation advisory committee, who spent a lot of time reviewing this plan. Metro's Kim Ellis, she's been staying apprised of our transportation plan and how it's been moving forward. I understand we have a letter that we got from her recently that kind of says, "Go Oregon City." I mentioned Gail, and I'm going to miss Lidveen? Lidveen, from ODOT. I already mentioned Steve. Lloyd Porty's been involved a fair amount, just kind of keeping us in check with what Main Street has to say. Our planning commission was, if you listened in on any of their planning commission meetings, I thought they brought a lot of good scrutiny to the process and a lot of time and energy and struggled with that decision, I know greatly, and eventually resulted in a recommendation to adopt. So we're happy about that. And of course, DKS and Associates has been doing the lion's share of the work. And we're not done yet. So with that, I think I'll pass it on to Carl. And is it up, Laura, for Carl? Is the presentation up already?
That's what he's doing.
Okay.
Need to push a magic button? I can do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They didn't do that last time. I don't think so. It didn't seem like it. Seemed like it.
Play. There you go.
Maybe it was because he had the presentation.
There we are.
Maybe that's why.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Carl Springer, DKS Associates. What I have for you tonight, I think most of it you've seen. I'm giving you the light version because I think you've chewed through the heavy version already. But for those who have not been plugged into this process that have been going on for this time, they'll get an overview, a quick overview of the issues that we tackled through this process. So these are the issues I'm going to tackle. A little bit about the update, the vision. Spend quite a bit of time on the investments and the funding, and then walk through the plan in brief. The details of the plan are out in the lobby, and you can read it better out there than you can on the screen, anyway, because there is a lot of detail on those maps. And then just highlight briefly some code changes. So this is the process we went through. We began in July, I believe, of 2012. And we went through a series of technical document preparations with the committees that John mentioned. The stakeholders committee had a public website that the city maintained and did a great job on. I don't know that I've complimented them before, I think I have with you guys, but they do a great job for a city this size. It's a fairly amazing website, I got to say. Produced a number of interim documents, those memos meetings. We took the process in little steps and wrote a document. People looked at it, checked in and said, "You're on track, keep going." And then we went through a series of meetings. Staff did quite a few meetings all by themselves with the local community outside of the process that I'm contracted for. Then, of course, the noticing process that went out with the postcards, 10,000 postcards. That resulted in a documented draft TSP that's up on the website, two volumes, a series of amendments. And here we are at last at the adoption hearing, which is what I think about when I start these processes. What's it going to take for me to get to the adoption hearing and succeed through this process? Glad to be here. The approach to the TSP update, now you all know you have a TSP in place, and there's a lot of good components of that. But as we went back at it this time around, we looked at it from a little bit of a different lens than we had in the prior years. The focus here really is to look on kind of this cascading list of ideas and options about managing, reducing, and revisiting a few key issues that make up travel choices in the community and drive decisions about where investments get made. So that we're going to heavily scrutinize any kind of major investments that involve, you know, new road construction, street extensions. We're going to look for better options earlier and rule those out completely before we move on down the line to, let's go build a street. Mainly because it's a very significant investment and it's very, can be disruptive to the community depending on how it's designed. So that's a good progression that we went through. I think it was effective. I think the community embraced it because it ended up with a better balance of investments across all different travel types than what was represented previously in the plan. So the goals that are here, I'm not going to read through those, but these are, these are the ways that we want to just characterize how the investments brought value to the community. So we tried to measure the value of these goals as represented by the project. So that's, that's a connection that's important, and it helped us go through a ranking process and come up with a list that we think can be funded. And we did change the name now. It's called Likely to Be Funded and Not Likely to Be Funded, just to remove all confusion about what's going to actually maybe make the cut. So these are the categories. We introduced quite a few new categories. Before, it was mainly just roads and the components of the roads, but now they're in distinct categories, driving, walking, biking, shared use, transit, this new category called family-friendly. Crossings, which I think is an important piece, you know, I think it's nice to have bike lanes, it's nice to have sidewalks, but if you can't get across the Arturo well, then you haven't got the whole picture in mind. So altogether, 360 projects, $220 million, and the breakdown is shown by those wheels. Have quite a few better balance across the modes. And what that does, I think it takes your dollar and takes it a little bit further in terms of addressing some of the issues that are important to the community. So 220 million is what we show on the plan, but alas, you don't have $220 million. So what you do have, a lot of that comes from STC projects, and for those in the audience that aren't familiar what that is, that's a fee that's paid at the time of development review. It's a one-time fee that new construction pays. And for the most part, that's a large chunk of the revenue that's going to come out of this plan. So as growth comes, they'll pay their fee, we'll collect enough fees, then we go build a project. That's the kind of the process that you go through. This just highlights a couple different breakdowns of that between the street, the walking, and the biking. Then this 14 million, I think I mentioned this to you before, the recent gas tax increase, you're going to accrue a bit more money there. The city has yet to decide, frankly, what to do with that money. That was unallocated at the time we looked at the analysis. If they do what they usually do with gas tax money, they're going to spend it on maintenance. Because that's where most of the gas tax money goes to. Right, John?
That's right.
So it's a little bit, little bit of a misnomer to show it in this chart, because I think the city has plenty of maintenance needs in addition to these capital needs. So another tip about STC funding, the dollars need to go to things other than correcting existing deficiencies. The law is written such that if you have a substandard road, the dollars can't go to just get the road back up to standard. That gets, comes out of some other pot of money. STCs are for building new improvements to support growth, not for correcting old problems. So there's the gap, $83 million. Pretty easy to see, I like that one. So two funding categories, likely to be funded, not likely. We've got $73 million in the likely and $148 million in the unlikely. And these are the maps. And so just a couple highlights of the maps are broken down into those categories that I mentioned before. We stuck with a color scheme that we had of red being funded and white being not funded. We will change the legend to catch up with that when we get to the next version. I think we've promised that to you before the next hearing, we'll have a revised version of the TSP. So all these edits that we've talked about over time, and the staff has a list of those things, those will be reflected here. We stuck with the color scheme mainly for colorblind issues. We stuck with red and white instead of red and green. Can be a bit of a problem for those who don't distinguish colors that well. So we've got street extensions, intersection focus, bike solutions, and shared walking and biking solutions. All good things, 300-plus projects, 200-plus million dollars. So some of the code changes we've touched on before, I'm not going to go into them, but highlight them. I think that there was a very healthy discussion about many of these things at the planning commission level, especially the parking piece came up very strongly. I think John has a few things to say about the mobility standard, and I think you're aware of, there's a few cases around town where we don't quite make it there, and we have to come up with a different way of basically measuring the cup. Instead of the cup is full and it's overflowing, we need to come up with some other metrics to help us through that. And I think John's going to speak to that. That's the end of my short presentation, Mr. Lewis.
All right, so I think the next slide, what's the next slide? Yes, mobility standards. So I really kind of looked at this slide, and I want to keep it simple. This mobility standards thing is a little bit not so simple. So I'm going to make some generalities about mobility standards. First of all, mobility standards are a measure of congestion, really, that's what it comes down to. And we've heard from prior, well, we've heard from Carl and John Ruplinger, how as typically a standard, an intersection starts failing when you have to sit through that light for too long, right? And typically, if it's more than one cycle, you really are at a failed intersection. And so that's kind of what mobility standards are, if you've kind of missed that. Historically, those mobility standards are applied at intersections, and some of these alternative mobility standards look at corridors as well. So that's, that's one of the things that we'll be looking at in the future. New development, when they come before the land use process, they would then go through traffic analysis, and we'd apply that to various intersections. If they exceed our adopted mobility standard... If they exceed our adopted mobility standard, then it becomes a problem. And usually, what that results in is improvements to the intersection to get them to a point where they would then be within the mobility standard. But in Oregon City, there's three intersections. We've talked about four in the past and we've looked at all of those in detail. And Carl recently kind of determined, we've really got three intersections that don't meet the mobility standards that we were planning to adopt under this TSP and that would require some additional study work. So the state, these are all on-state facilities. The state is aware of this. The state has asked that we, that the city do some study work to establish what those, do that alternative analysis for mobility standards. So we're trying to figure out what exactly that means. So that's going to take some time. So in the meantime, we're trying to figure out what are our options. And so we think there's kind of three options. And we're going to recommend to you our favorite. One is the kind of the do-nothing option and just wait until we get through those mobility standards. But we think that's not a good option because if there is new development that comes through the door before we adopt a standard, they'd essentially be off the hook on what those improvements would take. The second is something that's in the code package that you have with you. And it has a small list of projects that are at these intersections or at least two of these intersections. We're still working on some of this and we'll bring the final version back to you next hearing. But the second option would be a list of some projects that help, but they don't, they won't necessarily get a developer, a big-box developer or even smaller developer. It wouldn't necessarily get them under the mobility standards that are set. So you'd have to, you know, either deny that application or require them to build something that, you know, is just impractical for them to build. So that's kind of option number two. We think that has some merit to it, but we're, you know, that gets us through. Again, we're hoping to complete this study work in a year, but we don't want to miss the opportunity to require new development to build its fair share of improvements. So the third alternative is something that we're recommending. It takes these intersections and the problems that these intersections. We would ask Carl to develop a concept-level estimate for a fix. Now, some of these are complicated fixes. I mean, we're talking I-205 and 99 interchange. There are some things that we show in our TSP for solutions. There are some other things that we don't show because they're just too significant. Additional lanes across the Willamette River on the 205 Bridge is kind of one example of that.
I'm pretty sure that's not going to happen.
But what we do think might make sense, and we're still kind of working through the details on this, is to come up with that kind of reasonable cost estimate for reasonable projects and establish what that cost is and recognizing that's still a huge number. We're talking maybe 100 million dollars, right? And applying to that, typically when big projects like this have come to Oregon City and actually been able to follow through, they come through usually federal funding. So large-scale funding projects where we have to do a money match to get that grant or, you know, be at the table so we can participate in that project. And what we think we should do is collect enough STCs to pay for that. Our portion, you know, typically on a large-scale grant, a 10 or 15 million dollar grant, we're going to have to provide 20%. So we're looking at a 20% number. Carl talked a little bit about some of these projects are, can be fully STC-funded, others can't. Right? They're not, there's an existing problem. So how do we balance that existing problem with the new development that's coming? So there's a methodology that we need to follow and we need to really kind of work a little bit harder on to get figured out. But we think with, you know, a price tag of 100 million dollars, with a 20% match, with, you know, what piece of that is STC attributable and which piece isn't, we think that there is an STC increase that would be on top of our existing transportation STC that would be in the range of 600 to $1,000, depending on what our methodology lands on, that would fund those changes. And they would apply to every new development that occurs. Rather than try and single out certain areas, it would be an STC increase. And to me, the question is, does this decision-making body feel like the solution should be to put some money, additional money aside for these large-scale projects and try to improve on congestion? Or do we select something that lives with congestion and keeps our STCs where they need to be? And we think the responsible thing to do is to go ahead and acknowledge, we've got some projects out there. They're not necessarily all the city's responsibility, but they're, but we, in order to be at the table, we need to collect some funding to do that. And we think that we're talking about a number that's around 15 million dollars at the end of our planning horizon. So that's kind of what we're recommending and we're proposing to bring back in detail at our next meeting. So. Okay?
STCs, I don't want to price our businesses out of Oregon City. So we have to be very careful about the additional STCs.
That's true. And, you know, I think there's limited ways to fund this, fund this program. Some of those gas tax dollars that Carl showed up there, I think, actually do help contribute to some of those projects that aren't completely STC-funded. So we've got gas taxes and we've got our street maintenance utility fee, which really isn't about capacity, it's about road maintenance.
Right.
And we've got STCs. The other piece that we don't, and we haven't included into any of our estimates, is what we might get in grants. But we know that we, to play with, to participate with the grant program, we need to have funds to match. You know, I mean, every grant that we're applying for, it's, just to be competitive, we're finding that, you know, we need to bring at least the minimum to the table that they're asking for and maybe then some. So, you know, the downside that I see for development not going with this kind of alternative is we either end up with a complicated STC formula, which can be problematic for us, or we have to basically say, our code requires a project that, you know, right now, at least for this interim period, this 12 to 18 months or whatever it takes us to get through this mobility standards, because there may be something that comes out of that that changes this. And if that were the case and these projects were to kind of go away, then this commission could come back and say, "Well, remember, John, we increased STCs to account for these projects and now these projects are no longer needed. So we could dial that back or we could, you know, remember there's the likely-to-be-unfunded list? We could look harder at that likely-to-be unfunded."
Well, we want to remain business-friendly, so we have to be sensitive to that.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of people knocking down our doors, so I'd rather see us get going first before, I mean, I understand this could be necessary at some point, but I don't know.
Okay. That's the kind of feedback, you know, if you're not supportive of additional STCs, then that's good for us to know.
I'd like to see us going in the direction.
I just don't want to, I just don't want business to like run because they have to pay extra.
Or something else to set us apart from other cities where they're like.
So I want to know where do you think that will come from? Because the concern that I have is that if we don't collect something and we pass those opportunities up for those grants.
One thing.
And then we end up with an inability to approve a big project because we don't have it.
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying.
We don't want to say no, so we sort of want to say yes in some manner and I'm just wondering.
You know, discussion came in over coffee about how much STCs charge on residential. The point is that residential growth also contributes dramatically to our issues. And we don't seem to have too much problem having residential growth, partially because we have lands in which residential growth can occur. I mean, if we looked at a broader picture in terms of how much of this actually deals with the residential aspect of it, we might, you know, we might consider higher STCs at the residential level, but not hit the businesses. I'm just throwing that as a possibility. And you have to have some logical base for doing it. You just don't do those things anyway. But I don't know whether that'd be a possibility.
One of the reasons why I think it makes sense, well, I put down four, provide some level of funding for these projects. Not, I mean, we're not talking, we're not talking about funding, providing enough funding through the city for 100 million dollars worth of projects. We're talking about something much less than that. It's consistent with our current STC methodology, which is relatively confusing already. Adding another level of complexity to that concerns me a little bit. The alternate mobility standard study would confirm whether these concept projects are required. And so we could, again, back that back down again. And if we get that done. Part of this is just trying not to miss out on this period of time in between mobility standards and no mobility standards. Because the way our current code reads right now, we don't have too many options for what we do with those. I think this proposal also ensures that future development, again, the way our code's written right now, if we have future development, like a zone change or a master plan or anything like that, with the STC increase, it covers that. It says we have a fix in the Pike and/or a plan in the Pike for, you know, how we would fix that. So those are some reasons why I think it's something to consider.
John, something, and I'm not really sure that this is where to bring it up or not, but I was talking, thinking about this earlier today, is one of my sticking points is I believe that we should be doing much more of our STC work under urban renewal. And that is using urban renewal to create infrastructure that's going to bring business in rather than, because I see sidewalks and things as, we have to have them available for businesses. I don't see, if you're a business out there that's remodeling or putting, that you need to be putting in the sidewalks. You know, especially like downtown where you've got somebody that's redoing their place and they've got to do a part of a sidewalk and nobody else on the street has to do anything. I think that that's the city's responsibility in cleaning up blight and making this a place that people want to come develop. And so I would be interested in looking at, you know, maybe shifting that stuff around a little bit.
There's specific law, maybe it can speak up to this, about how STCs can or can't be used. But sidewalks is one way they can be used if you're collecting enough. So sidewalks, if it's a capacity improvement option and it's listed in our master plan, we can use STCs to create those kinds of projects.
Right. And we just heard from a person tonight that was, that was part of his STC fees. But what I'm saying is I believe that those are all part of infrastructure, like improving the sewers underneath the street, you know, doing the things that we need to do, maybe down Main Street or whatever. Those are infrastructure things that we should be providing as a city. And I think that urban renewal is the place to provide those. So maybe we need to shift.
In the urban renewal district.
Right, right. Excuse me.
These aren't all going to be.
That's a big difference.
Yeah, these aren't all going to be in there. But what I would like to know is if maybe next time you guys could give me like an example of how much extra money STCs are you talking about? If you could just, you know, and I understand it's hypothetical, but if you.
So for the hypothetical solution we were talking about, again, under the 100 million dollar scenario, it was a rate increase for a single-family home, which is also a per-trip, per-peak-hour trip of $715. And our current STC is, for transportation, is $7,615 for a single-family home.
But for a business, I'm thinking.
Well, for businesses, there's, it's a challenge to show you specifics. We can actually bring you a calculation of an existing development and you can see how that works out. But there's square footage calculations for a lot of businesses. Some are school districts, for instance. We were just talking about the new structure out at the Gardner Middle School. That's based on seats, how many students. So there's some complexity to how STCs are calculated in the transportation category, but it's square footage. There's different businesses, for instance, you know, a doctor's office might have a different STC trip rate than a restaurant, for instance.
How about at 213 and Beaver Creek Road? Could you just like put a business in there and tell me how much the current STCs will be and how much more you want to charge?
We can do that.
Okay. Perfect. That's what I want to know.
I think the easy answer is 10% more.
10% more.
15% more regardless of use type. Percentage-wise, it's going to be constant regardless of what the use is. So it should be, it should be true for all uses, commercial, industrial, residential, should be 15% more.
For those intersections, it's just 10% more for developers? Is that what you're saying?
The intersection doesn't necessarily play into this. The intersection plays into the total cost and how we allocate that across all our future trips. And that's how we kind of get back to the cost per trip.
And all of this contributes to the impact on the intersection and the interchanges and so forth. So it can't be a case that you charge them more and we all unpack them.
But isn't that what you were just saying, is you wanted to add an extra layer of STCs to our current?
Citywide, though.
Citywide. Okay.
And that's only to accommodate growth, not current conditions.
Okay.
And so seeing how that would affect it, beyond that, to help my frame of reference, also to have comparables of other cities, what their STCs are in relation to ours and what it would be with the additional STCs increase.
Yes.
So our standards prohibit what I was suggesting earlier on, I take it, that you couldn't, you couldn't have a different degree of increase in STC towards residential and a lesser degree towards.
It's all based on something called an equivalent dwelling unit.
Yeah.
That's the basic unit. And then depending upon the uses, they are multiples of that or percentages above that.
But that would be helpful. Thank you.
So sometimes reaching out to get the STC rates, if I bring five or six metro area STCs, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, that's plenty. I just want to have some sort of frame of reference to compare, to see where we would stack up. I think that's important.
So I'm thinking, Tony, do you have any suggestions on our next meeting? I mean, this is a public hearing. We're trying to get through approval. We want to stay on track there. Do you see this changing things much?
No, I think we're going to probably bring the STCs back as a separate ordinance. We're not going to roll them into this. It would be a separate fee increase. So I think it's just getting comfortable that with the methodology or the process that we're going to use in this TSP in terms of identifying these intersections, that we're going to raise the transportation system development charges. We would be bringing that back in an ordinance to amend the previous one that set the rates that we have today. But, so really, we've kind of had that discussion now. We're going to bring back some more information about other jurisdictions and some examples on certain square footages of businesses and types, what that increase looks like. So, yeah, I think we're all right to continue to move forward. We'll come back in June 5th with the ordinance and we'll make some final decisions that night based on the information that you received.
Thank you.
And if you're not ready, you're not ready.
Okay.
We go to the next one.
Thank you.
So our next speaker is Gail Curtis from ODOT.
Good evening Mayor Neal and Commissioners. Once again, my name is Gail Curtis and I'm a land use and transportation planner with ODOT and have served in a couple of different roles with this work. One is representing ODOT and taking the different questions that have come up and working with the various teams at ODOT, as well as serving as the grant manager. As you know, this, the bulk of this effort has been funded through the Transportation Growth Management Program, which is a joint program between the land use arm of the state and the transportation arm. And really to get at integrating land use and transportation. So I want to thank you for taking on this work. It is challenging and very complicated aspects to it. And also I want to thank the consultants team who really sought to create a document that would be understandable to the citizens of Oregon City. And I think they've really been successful at that. And then on top of that, I want to compliment your staff. You have a stellar staff, as you probably know. And the fact, just this last conversation demonstrates that. They're trying to get ahead of the game. I want to say that within the framework of the decision. I, I want to say that, within the framework of the decision-making that relates to the mobility targets, that stems from the Oregon Highway Plan, there is a provision that we identify that we're going to develop a refinement plan, and identify the timeframe, and we can move forward. So, that's to say, we don't have to solve this problem today, and I want to encourage you to adopt the transportation plan. I, I just want to say briefly, make a couple comments about the future trends of transportation. I don't want to take up too much time, because I know you have citizens that have important things to say. But, in terms of the trends, we see that travel choice will continue to be a major trend, and it's not only choice of routes, but choice of modes, and choice of time, and choice of distance. Land use plays a really important role, so, the idea is that we create communities where people can get what they need, their goods, and get to their jobs in shorter trips. And Portland metro areas compared to similar-sized cities across the nation do have twenty percent less travel time than other similar-sized places because of our integrated land use and transportation. Also, as a trend, we will see more opportunity to know before you go. That's where the primary state investments are going now, is into information, and in intellectual, or intelligent, excuse me, intelligent transportation. You're gonna be seeing more signage on the roads, indicating what the conditions are, and what you can expect in terms of travel time. We're going to see an increase in gadgets that tell us, we already have a tremendous amount of information that we're able to get as transit riders, real-time information as to when the, the bus is to arrive. Steve will say perhaps more about that. But, all in all, I want to thank you, and it's been a very good experience for the state, for me in particular, to work with your staff, and the city as a whole. And we look forward to future grants, there's, it's an annual cycle, so there's always opportunities to work together again, and certainly, we'll be working together on this refinement plan effort. And the final thing I want to say is, with this, the alternative mobility targets are really a recognition that we want local communities to be able to invest in their, their communities, that it's more balanced.
Right.
We can't really afford to keep the levels of investment that we have had in the past in the state system, and we do not expect that. So, it's really a shifting way of thinking about the priority investments, and for local communities to build the sidewalks, and the street connections that are needed on the local system. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask a question while I have you as a captive?
Sure. I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, if the time allows.
Okay. You said more signage on the roadways and things, does that include those electronic things?
Yes, uh-huh.
Those things slow traffic down so much.
Oh.
Because people can't read fast enough.
They can't read fast enough, yeah.
Unless we start teaching speed reading, it's just gonna make a mess.
That's a good note. And possibly, the answer will be multiple signs, not expecting-
Like the burma shave?
That's right.
Okay.
And one of the places that we're going to see it next is on two seventeen, that's, there's quite a bit of planning for signage to go in that location. And it's really about safety, not so much the, the time savings, but preventing-
When you're talking about signage, what are you talking about? I mean, I see, I regard included in signage, these things that actually keep track of your speed, and let you know what you're doing, which I think are very effective.
Those are proving to be very effective. That type of signage, but more about knowledge about, an incident is ahead, recommend taking alternative route.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Managing the system.
That is helpful.
Okay, thank you.
If you can read quickly. Thank you.
So, Steve Kautz with TriMet is in the hot seat next.
Welcome, Steve.
Aren't all of you in the hot seat?
Good evening, Mayor Neal and Commissioners. I appreciate also this opportunity to, to speak very briefly about your TSP process. It was really a, a great experience to have a chance to serve on the technical advisory team for the TSP. I would echo other comments, complimenting your staff and the consultant team. I thought it was just a very high level of commitment, and a thoughtful process, and well-supported, certainly by all involved. Just to reiterate, I think the, as you well know, there's major parts of this plan that focus on walking, biking, safe crossings, and certainly, TriMet is very supportive of, of all of those features of the community, and strengthening them. We are seeking partnerships, and have active partnerships with, with Oregon City, and with other jurisdictions across the region, to, to try to improve those forms of active transportation access and safety. All of our transit users are, usually begin or end, and end their trips as walkers or bicyclists, and so, those are really key connections, and they help strengthen the overall system, and it makes service easier and safer to use, for all concerned. So, that's, those investments are certainly to be commended. And clearly, there's a lot of challenge there, there's, like a lot of things, there's more need than there is resource, but, for instance, at this time, TriMet has partnered with Oregon City for a pending application for regional flexible funds for the Malala Street project, and, so, there's a case where, hopefully, we can be successful with that, and TriMet can provide some improved facilities that would help complement the other parts of that project. I, I did want to also mention, the TSP, of course, is a long-range vision for your community, for what your healthy and vital transportation mobility system looks like in the future. TriMet has embarked, just within the past year, on an effort that we're gonna be continuing for another year or two, and that is to work in each major sector of our service area, with local jurisdictions, institutions, employers, neighborhoods, stakeholders, to have conversations and develop a shared vision for what the future transit service and system should be in each of these areas. And we, we can't be every place at once, so we started on the west side, basically Beaverton to Hillsborough, that's wrapping up now. This summer, we'll be launching the work in the east side, generally I-205 to Gresham, and also southwest, Lake Oswego to Sherwood. But, close after that, in early calendar fourteen, we'll be getting what we're calling the southeast area, and that's Happy, that's Milwaukee to Happy Valley, south to Oregon City, including the city. And that will be a process that will be heavily outreach-based, lots of discussion and conversation to understand needs. Fundamentally, we'd like to have this vision, where should new service go, and how can we improve the service we have already, to help meet the needs of future growth. So, that's a process I look forward to getting underway. We'll also include within it the service plan for the startup of the Orange Line Service in fall of fifteen, both the rail service and the associated bus service changes with that. And as part of that Orange Line startup, we anticipate that we should hopefully be able to make some adjustments and improvements, for instance, in the line thirty-three McLaughlin service, which we were forced to make some off-peak reductions in, back in the oh-nine and ten, when we were dealing with the first impacts of the recession. So, some good work coming up, and we think that continuing to seek partnerships and be creative, do everything we can with the resources we have. It is, it's budget time, our TriMet board will be adopting our fiscal fourteen budget at their meeting next week. That budget essentially holds, the, holds harmless on service, no, no service reductions, no fare increases, but, as we all know, there are some major long-term issues that we need to solve in terms of our cost structure, and the, the board and our general manager, Neil McFarland, are absolutely committed to getting that done. It won't be necessarily a quick or easy process, but we feel we need to get there, because we need to address the cost structure, and then, we're positioned where we can, resources can go to grow service, which we all know is very much needed in the region. So, I'll be, you'll, you'll see and hear me again, as we work in to this longer-term process, but I appreciate the chance to be a part of the TSP.
I'm gonna, I'm not putting you on the spot, I want to bring up something that has, well, has something to do with what we're talking about, that was very frustrating. I understand that, you know, you've looked at the services, and you have dropped some lines. One thing that happens when you do that, we've had more than one assisted care facility who cater to severely handicapped individuals that need transportation. They can't, they can't go to the bus stop, they're not capable of doing so. And apparently, the services you apply there have to be within about a mile or so of, of an existing line. The result, when we dropped the South End line, we had those kinds of facilities that lost the TriMet services for their handicapped people. When you're talking about the budget process, maybe you could bring this up, because some of those, some of those institutions located their, you know, their facilities, so they could have access to that TriMet service, and then they lost it. And it, I, I think it's, you know, it's unfair to, a, 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 a critical, people that have critical needs. And I wanted, I know this is not the subject at hand, but I haven't had much of an opportunity to speak to anybody at, at TriMet about this.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I, I believe that that's, we have had some recent discussion with John, and we're thinking about, trying to think of some creative solutions that might be possible. There, the county does have some programs that supplement TriMet special transportation as well, but we need to look to see if there are some, what those solutions might look like. Now, special needs population is an important one. I worked specifically in that area for many years at TriMet, I'm, so I'm really familiar with how important that service is. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
One thing, just to add to that, is, we did meet with TriMet recently, and they were gracious enough to, to share with us some contacts with the county, which we've also met with, and Rideshare, which has done some pretty interesting projects in, in Hillsborough, and, or not Hillsborough, Cornelius. And there's another location, which I can't think of right now, that they've done some unique work on, too. First of all, do some surveys, studies, figure out where that service needs are. They don't have, right now, you know, great options for serving some of those populations long-term, but they're, they're thinking they're gonna have something that would be sustainable. But, it, there's, there's some differences between them and us, in terms of their economics, that also is a factor here, too. So, we're gonna continue to work through that, and provide you a better update than this right now, but, I'm trying to, trying to get through those communications.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get you to-
Come on down. Hi there. Good evening, Mayor Neal and Commissioners. I'm gonna provide a brief presentation about the geologic hazard overlay district, which Provided a version of this presentation to the Planning Commission on Monday night, as part of their information about the transportation system plan. So, Oregon City's geologic hazard overlay district has been adopted and amended over time, since, I believe, nineteen ninety-nine. And I'm gonna show you some graphics and maps, and talk, summarize some of the review standards and procedures that we use, which apply to new development and, and infrastructure as well. Our statewide planning goal for natural hazards planning is embodied in Goal Seven. And Goal Seven is implemented at the local level by cities through their comprehensive plan and zoning codes, frequently through the use of overlay districts like, like Oregon Cities. The definition of the geologic hazards overlay zone in our code means lands that are mapped by the City of Oregon City, subject to, and which are subject to review under our code. They include lands that are identified on our geologic map, including areas that are within fifty feet of the toe or crest of a slope that's over twenty-five percent, or which is a mapped landslide, or which has particular geology and soil conditions which are prone to hazards. And some of the source documents for all of this is from the Department of Oregon Geology and Minerals, and from various other reports that we reference in our code and on our map, including bulletins from Portland State University, and other, other experts. This is a copy of the City of Oregon City Slope and Geology Map, which was adopted by the City Commission in two thousand and ten, and it references our code and the sources documents that I mentioned. It includes soil and geology types, known debris flows, faults and landslides, and slopes, as well as the landslide types that we reference in the code. And if anyone wants to know whether their property is within the geologic hazard overlay zone, they can either talk to the Planning Division directly, or call us and ask us, and we will go to the city website, and either generate a property report for them, which will show whether their tax lot is within that zone, or they can look at the OC Web Maps facility online, and look at their property in relation to the larger city, and some of the other features as well. It's a very, very good tool, and it's fairly easy to use. So, the geologic hazards overlay establishes a regulatory review boundary, which encompasses these areas, and that is approximately eighteen hundred and thirty acres, or about twenty-nine percent of the city. What types of projects require geologic hazard review? Virtually, any activity, development activity within the overlay requires some type of review. And what projects are exempt from city review? Generally speaking, projects which are of very low disturbance, such as excavation less than two feet, any replacement or maintenance or construction of utility lines within existing rights of way, alterations that are small, and which have a very limited amount of grading, and fill, fill which is of a small scale. Also, removal of, removal of noxious vegetation, and of particular importance is the exemption clause for emergency actions to prevent imminent threat to public health, safety, or danger to property. And the review entails, depending on the level of review, this list is for a very detailed land use review, but it would include literature review and analysis of site conditions by licensed professional engineers, and they would look at some of these reports that we've referenced in our code. They will look at site-specific issues, such as soil, groundwater conditions, how the land drains, the topography, tree removal, grading, erosion control techniques, and then, construction techniques to either minimize the threat to the stability of the slope or area, or which may create a further problem. And so, we're looking at all of that in relation to adjacent properties as well, and the procedures that are in place in the code are, are specifically written to ensure that when review and recommendation and conditions of approval are attached to developments, that there is follow-through, when the final construction happens, and that the geologic engineers, or geotechnical engineers that write the reports, which are reviewed by the city, actually put their stamp on the final construction plans- final construction plans, and in specific cases, actually inspect the work on-site. Here's a few examples of standards in the code. Limits on construction dates, primarily May through October. Requirements for terracing to avoid large vertical cut and fill. Significant limits on residential density in hazard areas. The limiting of disturbance, which is caused by grading, vegetation removal and impervious surface coverage. And a requirement to employ all practical means to avoid locating roads, utilities and public facilities on or across slopes of greater than 35%. This is a very short list. There are a lot more detail in the code. Procedurally, some of the recommendations that came out of some of our most recent concept planning processes include the requirement that geologic assessments and geotechnical reports must be reviewed by an engineer certified for expertise in geology or geologic engineering and geotechnical engineering, not just civil engineering. And the city has the authority to require that these reports be peer-reviewed by a similarly qualified professional chosen by the city at the applicant's expense, if necessary. And so what is the process for review? It really depends on the specific site and the proposed development. And all reviews must show compliance with development standards in the code, whether they're exempt, if they're exempt, whether they're done in-house, or whether they're going through a full land use process. By in-house, I'm referring to types of reviews that would be done for pre-existing development or a single lot, such as a remodel with a small amount of grading, or which is just going through a building permit process. The types of projects which require full land use review with public notice are new developments like subdivisions and site plan reviews. So if you have any questions about this process, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So you're probably wondering how we went from transportation to hillsides. So there was quite a bit of discussion through the public comment period, as well as with the Planning Commission, about concern about steep slopes, landslides, and where we development, where development occurs. And so we went back and made a presentation with the Planning Commission and tried to remind them that we went through and made significant improvements in additions to our municipal code as it deals with unstable slopes and hillsides, and specifically implemented recommendations that came out of the Park Place Concept Plan from GRI, I believe it was. They made recommendations about our code. And so we went in and implemented those, adopted those recommendations, incorporated multiple other maps, increased the buffer areas around these geologic hazards area. And, you know, whether the commission tonight, or when we adopted TSP, there was some discussion about whether we should include a little language that says, you know, in these certain areas, we want to make sure we have geologic hazards reviews. And if we do, that's fine. But if we don't, we're still going to go into geologic hazards reviews before public infrastructure is put in, whether it's by the private side or the public side. And so we just wanted to bring forward, because you may hear some testimony, or if you watched the Planning Commission, there was a lot of testimony about where do we build, how do we know where to put the roads. And so what this is showing is that we're aware. We've actually identified the areas and created larger buffers to make sure that we do review, whether it be a subdivision or a new road that goes into that area. And so with that, that's why you saw this tonight.
That's good. That's good review. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Just, it's difficult, I have a hard time when you say slopes of 35% or, you know, whatever. Would, like, Seventh Street have been built if these standards were in place?
Well, it's hard to say. Probably it was done out of public necessity, but, you know, the need to, you know, put a road in the right place to serve a multitude of other uses. But at that time, no, these standards weren't in place, and they probably, you know, just built it with the right kind of engineering that they had at the time. So those pre-existing types of situations probably were done according to, you know, public review and engineering and that sort of thing. And there's opportunities to mitigate for weaknesses in those pre-existing situations.
I'm just trying to figure out how different things could look.
Well, I think that, you know, when all of their options are exhausted, sometimes you have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't, I mean, because it's 35% slope, there are other factors that play in. We've got the, we've got the effects of the floods that have occurred, or geologic history that have sedimentations in some of these areas that have caused the steep slopes that are probably pretty much unbuildable, whereas other areas were, are on assault structures, so they're not going to move as much. But I think it's a fair question, but I guess we learn.
No, I didn't mean it was wrong. I just mean that, you know, I'm trying to envision what would it look like.
What would a 35% look like?
Yeah.
Right. That's, that's steep. Yeah. I think what's important to take away is that it's not only based on slope. It's not just arbitrary 25% or 35%. There's more data that's utilized in this data. So you could have a slope of 10%, but it's at a landslide slump.
Right.
So it would get, it's been captured in our data. So just putting it out there that it's more than just an arbitrary percentage of slope.
Okay. I have a better way to ask it. What's Washington Street?
John, any idea?
You mean, what slope is it?
I don't know. It's probably, I think it's a little, I bet it's about 12 or 14%.
Is that all?
Yeah.
I think it depends which block.
Which part of Washington?
From the bottom. From 15th to 7th.
I'll do an engineering analysis. I'll tell you in a minute.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for indulging me.
Hold the slopes.
Thank you. That was very good. Thank you.
Let's make a deal TV show. I'll give you $50 if you have a pickle in your purse.
Singer Hill.
Singer Hill is probably serious.
Now, with the introduction of the fact that this was not at all irrelevant, were there other speakers, too?
This is a public hearing. I wanted to tell you that we are not, we're not planning to make a decision tonight. This is going to come back to us at our next meeting, where we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. I have two people on at this moment, Christine Kosinski and Tom Guile. Would you
I'm going to make the assumption, some of the things that people from the Planning Commission might directly apply to, some of the things you might talk about.
They must have known she was coming.
Well, actually, my landslide speech is next time.
Oh, okay.
If you want to get ready. Not that I, I never pretend to be an engineer, please. Don't ever think that I pretend to. My name is Christine Kosinski. I live in unincorporated Clarkmoss County. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hamlet and the people of Holly Lane, and I do request a couple of extra minutes, please. At the March 11th Planning Commission meeting, I did bring forth concerns that the city has placed Holly Lane in its TSP, but never did ask the hundreds of citizens of Holly Lane, nor the 6,500 people residing in the Hamlet of Beaver Creek, to be part of the planning process. I further stated that the people of Holly Lane outside the UGB had never received any notices from the city regarding their intentions to include Holly in their TSP. John Lewis and Laura Turway felt that the Hamlet had been invited as a stakeholder, but proof of this was not available at that time. John Lewis then asked Laura to send a notice of meeting dates and times to the people of Holly Lane outside the UGB. These notices were received by most on March 20th. These citizens continue, though, to be upset because the city did not reach out and ask a member of the Hamlet of Beaver Creek or a citizen of Holly Lane to sit on the city's transportation committee to represent their concerns. They feel the city wants their street, but has excluded each of them in every part of the planning process. Yes, I have heard the city's explanations that we've met our legal obligations. We've posted notices. We've gone to the newspaper. However, I feel that you are morally and ethically bound to include the 600-plus people of Holly Lane in these important planning decisions, but you chose not to, which is a failure to meet Goal 1. The idea to extend Holly Lane to Henrissi on the south and to Holcomb on the north came out of the Park Place Concept Plan. It was explained to the community that a concept plan is like a dream. If you could dream what you would like for your neighborhood, what do you want it to look like? After many community and city meetings, it became clear that transportation and the need for roads was one of the biggest challenges for this plan due to the difficult topography in this area. As the planning process continued, it was evident that there were no good, stable areas for roads within the concept plan. However, the city did have to meet ODOT, Metro and state requirements to approve the plan. Therefore, the Holly Lane extension to Holcomb and the Swan Road extension were put into the plan. Again, this was all a big dream, and there was no clear evidence that either of these roads could even be built. Additionally, neither Holly nor Swan were studied or reviewed as possible roadways in the preliminary geological study. Therefore, the city was ignorant whether it was even possible to build either of these two proposed roads. But remember again, these roads were just one big dream. I want to point out that during the concept planning period, Kittleson and Associates stated to the city that the Park Place Plan would generate from 16,000 to 20,000 average daily trips per day, with many of these vehicles using Holly for north-south travel. The Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was to generate about 13,000 residential ADTs and 33,000 commercial ADTs per day, again, many motorists choosing Holly. In studying your current TSP update, you are now forecasting many, many more trips than those which you originally proposed to both the people of Holly Lane and the Hamlet of Beaver Creek. I note you are planning to extend several more streets across Beaver Creek Road and connect them into Holly. This traffic could virtually put 50,000 vehicles and more per day down Holly Lane, a street where most homes sit very close to the road. You are planning to build more than a Sunnyside Road and more than a Harmony Road. You are planning to build a freeway through a residential neighborhood that sits in a corridor of huge landslides and unstable soils. Oregon City has been developing far too much residential without the proper infrastructure necessary to support large development. Many citizens have been telling you this for years. You did not listen, and now the birds have come home to roost. There simply are not enough roads in this city to support the high amount of development, and now you are asking the people of Holly Lane and the other few county roads to pull you out of a pickle. In studying your TSP, it is evident that about three-fourths of your upgrades are affecting Holly Lane, and it is further evident that Beaver Creek and Highway 213 are failing, and that you now are planning to divert traffic away from the overcrowded arteries into smaller interior roads where you are placing people, children and families in harm's way. You have conveniently planned to pull traffic away from Beaver Creek, placing it through the Beaver Creek Concept Plan up into Thayer and Maple Lane, virtually paralleling Beaver Creek Road. The same holds true for Holly Lane. Highway 213 is failing, so Holly will be used as a dumping ground for the thousands of vehicles that cannot fit onto the arterial grid. It is sad that you are willing to sacrifice the safety of the people who don't even live in your city, because you have overdeveloped without the proper infrastructure. It is not fair for you to tell this community to dream and then hand them a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Guile.
Cheerful. Good evening. I don't come here often enough. I have a few prepared comments, too. We did not coordinate this. No idea that Christine was going to be here.
I haven't been.
Tom Guile, Oregon City residence, resident. Just wanted to go on public record, I'm reading this, by the way, so I can be more concise instead of wondering for words. Just wanted to go on public record with a comment about the transportation plan. Along with the other Planning Commissioners, I voted to approve the plan because 98% of it was appropriate for our city's growth. However, I wanted to make sure that my qualifying comments prior to my voting to approve the TSP are included in your decision process. With all due respect to Tony and John and Laura and Pete, Christine, all, great job on that and to all the people who worked on it. But as all of you know, for 10 years, I've argued against a connector road north from Holly Lane, crossing Redland Road and ending up at Holcomb Boulevard. Along with other citizens for responsible growth in that area, I have continually supported the effort to block annexing the area known as the Park Place Concept Plan. The road would traverse, as we've all seen, and if you've still got the map up there, this is that area right here in Livesey area right through here. This is Livesey, and this is where the road is planned to come through and would come right through that area right there. That's the pass-through and the urban growth boundary. The road would traverse those steep canyon areas, natural areas of wildlife and wooded areas, and known slide areas. Worse, the road would go directly behind some homes in Trailview, making many of us islands between a connector road behind us and a street in front of us. Now, again, I want to point out the arrow right there. Where was the arrow? Right here. Right there is the passage. This property here is owned by Rich Conlee, who refuses to give it up. But right here is the passage. There, you see purple spots there. That purple spot, that's my house. Actually, when I bought that house, the first few months I was there, I called the state because a landscaper came in and said, "You've got a boulder wall behind your property that's higher than eight feet, and we don't think it was properly designed." So I had nine people out there. I had Syntex Homes, I had the state. State made Syntex Home because it was so big, and there were just boulders set on top of boulders. There's holes big enough for bears to go in and hibernate. That's how big. So Syntex said, "You need to fill those and put a footer there." Or, excuse me, the state said that to Syntex. But that's right in that area where a road would come through. So that's why all these years I've been speaking against it. So despite my opposition to this road, I voted to approve the TSP due to the many good things put together by our Public Works Department and others involved in the process. I realize it's a look at the future out to 2035. I voted for the TSP because I feel confident that the citizens of Holly Lane and those in Trailview off Holcomb Boulevard will continue to raise awareness to the voters of Oregon City about the dangers in that area. I believe in my soul that as long as that road, just the road, is on the TSP and part of the Park Place Concept Plan for the future, that all future annexations in that Park Place area will probably be, get voted down by educated citizens. Develop the area up there with homes, develop the Livesey area with homes, but it's the road that I think everyone has the major problems with. But again, stepping back, as a member of the Planning Commission, I wish to recognize all the effort that the staff and others put into a very good document. It was a great effort that I can support, just not that connector road.
I was personally concerned that your house was listed as a hazard point on the map.
That purple spot there, I saw that on Monday night at the Planning Commission. Oh my God, that purple spot's right near mine. But thank you very much for allowing me to make a comment.
Thank you.
And congratulations to John, Tony and the whole crew, and everybody else who worked on it. It was a great plan.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other, I have no other comments here. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Somebody in the back.
Okay, well, sign up. You gotta, you gotta file.
You can do that after the fact, though.
Well, we're waiting for that. Kathy, I just wanted to share.
Oh, yes. Great.
Washington Street, you know, there's basically three sections along Washington Street, 10th to 11th. 10th to 11th, 11th to 12th, and then 13th to 14th that are similar in slope. They're just under 12%, so I think that's pretty close to my eyes. Now, just, but if you want more slope, you can --
Steeper.
If you want more slope, try Pearl Street. It's about 33%.
Is it? Oh. Thank you.
A short segment is about.
That's the part.
Jim, come forward.
That's the sledding. No, kidding. Kidding, just kidding.
Your name and whether you live in Oregon City or not.
My name is Jim Hall. I live in Oregon City. I have been a resident of Oregon City about 46 years. That's a long time. That's how my great health got great. It's almost as great as yours, isn't it? I was on the Planning Commission when that unfortunate development owner's Newell Ridge was developed. I hassled the developer to quite an extent. I happen to have a degree in geology from Oregon State, so I am not totally ignorant on geological phenomena. And I told him that that property sits on an aeolian deposit, and that is, on top is the Boring Basalt. Now, you have water coming down through there, and the damn stuff erodes. It's horrible. It's slick, it's platy, it will not stick, and that is characteristic of most all of these properties out there in those sharp V drainage waves. All of the area on the side of the Oregon City Golf Course, those of you who are ignorant enough, as I am, to go out and beat the ball around, you get on the backside up there, and that property drops almost vertically. It is really, really steep. Now, what you have there, again, as I said, you have Boring Basalts up on the top, and that's evidenced by the heavy red clay. You get down on the slopes, if you can walk it, and you have a very gray, platy, slick clay, and it's not going to stay there. You cut a toe, and what's above it is going to come down. Now, my only reason for being here today, or tonight, is to, again, express my extreme concern on developments like Newell Crest. Those roads, many of those roads that you have indicated on the maps outside, in my opinion, are misplaced. And what happens is that they unfortunately become cast in concrete as people develop hither and yon. Well, that's where the road goes, so that's where we will develop it. I think what you need to do is go out and make some very, very detailed analyses of those properties and see where the road could, not where it should, but first where it could go, and then you need to see where it should go. And I don't think that's been done at this time. In fact, the map, in my opinion, evidences that. So I think you need a lot of research on that area out in that part of the city and adjoining areas as to what you could and should do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I won't be closing the hearing, but I do have a question. Do we do have to make a formal motion to continue?
I would do it just so. You've advertised it, and you have an ordinance before you, and you're going to consider to carry it over.
We're just going to continue the public hearing, but we'll probably take a motion to go ahead and --
To June 5th.
And to June 4th. Do I hear a motion?
June 5th.
June 5th.
Sure. Move to -- Oh. Move to hold the Transportation System Update Plan, File L 1301, over to June 4th. Second.
5th.
5th.
Don't listen to me. Okay. I gotta flip over here where I can vote. Unanimous vote. And so if other people have comments at a later point, you'll have an opportunity to bring them forward. Thank you. With that, we're going to go into our general business. The Resolution 1312, formal recognition of the Two Rivers Neighborhood Association. Nancy I.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the Two Rivers Neighborhood Association held its first meeting on February 28th. The residents and business owners in the area elected officers, and they adopted bylaws, and they approved the name Two Rivers Neighborhood Association. They then submitted a letter requesting that the association be formally recognized by the city of Oregon City, and then on April 17th, staff brought forth the resolution and the agreement to you for discussion. The commission discussed the residential and the business components at that meeting. They received comments from citizens. There was discussion on representation on the CIC and other items as well. I wanted to remind you also that the city commission, or that the Neighborhood Association bylaws can be changed by the association independently of any approval of your resolution and agreement. So they're kind of disconnected as far as the approval process. So anyway, as such, the resolution and agreement are before you again this evening for further discussion and vote if you so desire.
Do you have any discussion?
I'll start it. I was the one that had the biggest issue with the bylaws last meeting. I still think that, you know, we haven't used the CIC to vet this and give us a recommendation like we do the other committees, but that's my own opinion, so I'll leave it at that.
I guess my response is the CIC, although intended to be an umbrella group, is not the basis of the Neighborhood Associations being established.
You're correct.
It never has been. I presume that some neighborhoods could choose not to even participate with the CIC. The Neighborhood Associations were created in their own right. So I don't think that's a reason for rejecting it. We have an area that's really unrepresented. It's unique in its location, and as such, I presume it has certain issues that do not affect the, are not that much of a concern of its neighboring Neighborhood Associations, the LaFle Neighborhood Association, and the Park Place Neighborhood Association. As I said, my only concern was at the CIC, would it be possible for them to have a, somebody that would say a business owner on Main Street and also as a resident someplace else to hold two seats, but I think that's an issue for the CIC, and I don't think they would permit that to happen in any case. But I do feel it's an area that needs representation, personally.
Excuse me, Mayor. Currently, there isn't a procedure that's in place for the CIC to recommend approval of a Neighborhood Association to the city commission, but the CIC is intending to discuss that at one of its future meetings. So if there were any future neighborhoods that would come forward that would want to be recognized, then that could be in place for that. But at this time, for this Neighborhood Association, there is no procedure in place.
And it's, I know that the commission recognizes and does the formal, but I think it's just a courtesy that the CIC be involved in some order.
Any other comments?
Can I make a motion?
You may.
Okay, so I'm going to move, suggest that we recognize the Two Rivers Neighborhood Association as a new neighborhood in Oregon City.
I hear a second.
Second. I gotta get to the thing.
There you go.
Vote, please. Four in favor and one against. That, we'll go on to the next item, and that is the second reading of Ordinance 13-1007, Land Use Application Request for Zone Change Approval, 11 Lot Subdivision and Geological Hazard Permit to Property Located at 19370P's Row. We've had the first reading discussions before. Anybody ready to put forward a motion for a second reading?
So I move for the second reading of Ordinance 13-1007, Land Use Application Requesting Approval for a Zone Change, 11 Lot Subdivision and Geological Hazards Permit for the property located at 19370P's Row.
Second by Carol Polly. The reading, please.
This is Ordinance Number 13-1007, an ordinance amending Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 17, Point 06, Point 030 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code by changing the properties identified as Clackamas County Map 3-2E-7B, Tax Lot 3300 from R10 Single Family Dwelling District to R6 Single Family Dwelling District, and approving an 11-Lot Subdivision and Geological Hazards Review for the properties.
Vote, please. Vote is unanimous. With that, we're going to go to, from the consent agenda, going to 8H. I'll ask our city recorder to speak to it.
Okay, it was brought to my attention by a citizen that there was, one word was incorrect in the minutes of April 17th. It had read that there was a vote, that each neighborhood should have two voting members, and it was actually a consensus from the CIC. It wasn't a vote. So we're changing the word "vote" to "consensus." That's the only change that I would have.
I hear a motion to approve those minutes. And as amended.
Yeah. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Here we go. Vote, please. Unanimous support. Motion on the consent agenda.
Moved, approved, consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mum, second by Commissioner Smith. Again, a unanimous vote. With that, moving on, I presume, to our city managers' recorder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you probably read in the Friday highlights that last Friday we had a very successful tour of the Willamette Falls site, and Senator Allen Olson and others were there with us on the tour. I think Mayor Neely was also there. And since that time, we also have learned of an opportunity on May 24th for the mayor to go to Salem and testify in front of the Budget Committee there. About the $5 million is still hanging on through the budget process, and we're hoping for the little exclamation point there to get us over the finish line. So he'll be going there, I think, after speaking with him today, and we're providing some information to help prep him for that meeting. Also, Eric and Maureen have been conspiring together to promote business opportunities and a series of training and other tools that businesses can use for opening in Oregon City. Eric, do you want to say a little bit about that?
Sure. We're calling it our entrepreneurship series, and actually, the title of it is Business Recipes, Ingredients for Cooking Up Business Success. So if you come, you'll be in for a savory discussion of how to --
Is Martha Stewart helping you?
Well, that'd be nice. We're not quite there yet, but we're wanting to have four of these throughout the year. And this first one's going to be presented by Rob Campbell, the director of the Small Business Development Center from the Community College, and he's going to be talking about lessons learned of small businesses. So we're hoping it'll be very informative and very popular, so. I think Mo and I partner pretty well together, so.
You do what together?
We partner pretty well together. Yeah, sorry. Partner.
Eric, when you have the floor, you might also want to talk about the site visits with the Chamber of Commerce and the state.
Oh, the first event at the library, our business development series, is going to be May 30th at 7:00 at the library, so. And I'm also happy to announce that --
That's PM.
It is, yes. I'm also happy to announce that the Economic Development Department is kicking off its site visitation initiative, and so we're doing that in partnership with the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce and Business Oregon, which is the state's Business and Economic Development Department. So we'll be visiting Super Genius on Friday to learn more about them, to learn about some of their needs they might have, and how we might be able to match them up with some programs. But we hope to do at least six throughout the year, throughout the city.
Questions on that?
So next, I'm going to ask John Lewis to talk to you a little bit about funding for a Malala Road project.
Hey, Nancy, can you put the screen up for me? I mean, can you, can it project?
Turn down the light, too.
Thank you, yeah. So this is just a heads-up for you, but also for our listening public. So the Malala Avenue Phase 3 project is, we're seeking grant funding for that, and the public comment, it's a Metro grant, and the public comment period is now. And so we've added a resource page on our website. It's an online survey for Malala Avenue Beaver Creek Road, and I'm telling you this because there's a survey that comes up that I'm asking you each to look at, but I'm also asking you to reach out to your county commissioners and possibly Metro if you know participants or commissioners on Metro Advisory Board. So there's lots of information about the project here. You can click on this online survey button, and it'll take you right to the Metro site where our project is listed. Now, there's ways to get to other projects if you're interested. We're competing for funding here, really. The funds requested is $4,588,000. That's the full amount. We're also contributing a fair amount of money ourself if we get this project. So there's a lot of project details. I'm going to keep it short. Bottom line is, once you go here, you can log on, giving your first and last name and who you're with, and there's three questions that they ask. How well would this project help people get to where they need to go in the community without a car? So again, it's back to looking for other modes, so that's an emphasis of the Metro grant. How could it be improved to meet community needs? And is there anything else you would like to tell us about the project? So we want positive comments from you, hopefully, about this project. And I don't, you know, I don't know how much influence this is going to have on this particular project because there's a decision-making body and a political process. Betty, you're on the C4 Committee, and there's a representative that represents Clackamas County at J-PAC, and Donna Jordan is her name from Lake Oswego. If you know Donna Jordan, I'm asking that you reach out to her. Carla Colette is on there as well as Sabalas, Commissioner Sabas. So those would be important people to reach out to from a political position and say this project's important to us. It does do a great job, and there's some bullet points for you to read through on the previous page that tell you kind of why it's important, but you're familiar enough with that part of town that you know that we've got affordable housing on one side and commercial on the other, and that's really, you know, providing safe travel ways for those and others is what we're looking for. So appreciate your time on that.
Thank you, John.
And John, did you find anything on, we were going to report back on the on-call system for the municipal elevator that was raised last.
Yes, we did. So, and something I didn't know, one of those little details about the elevator, but Martin went down there today, and he said he saved us thousands of dollars.
Ooh, nice.
So another feather in his cap. The deal is, though, is there's an old-style phone in the elevator, and they sit it on the floor there, apparently, and depending on movement, if they kick it or something, it kind of falls off, you know, it's the old-style small phone, and if they remove that, not quite that old. So if it's, if it gets kicked off, but still idling there or sitting there, they lose dial tone, and then they have to hang it up for a while, and it doesn't work so well. So there's -- So this, there's a phone there, there's a way to call out. Operators just need to know, and I know they've got some new ones down there that maybe don't know. Sandy was well aware of the problem. So we handed them a heavy rubber band.
Oh, nice.
To wrap it around the phone to keep it on track, so that's, that's all.
That's an engineered solution.
Rubber bands. Can I make a comment? My concern was that this is a very small space, and people may not have time or the ability to dial 111, where if they've got a little button they can push, it's much safer. And in confined spaces like that, I don't know if you'd have the time to dial.
So you're advocating for, you want us to look at a panic button instead of a, yeah. Well, I'm sure that you can talk to the PD about that as well.
Thank you for saving thousands of dollars.
Yes, here's another one. I want to say there is a panic button in that thing, but I will have.
I asked to get today, and they said no, so.
We'll check.
Okay. Maybe I'll just leave a dog for them.
Can I get back to just you, or are you all interested in that response?
You can just get back to me, and we'll email it out. It's not a public, I mean, I think we're okay there. So last but not least, Oregon City is a city of firsts, as we know, which can be good and bad, but just reminded tonight with the article in the, on Oregon Live about other cities, particularly Camby and others, that are having challenges trying to negotiate with the county on their fiber. And people seem to want to go where we've already been, at least some, and, and others don't want to go where we've been. So I'm really glad that we have that behind us, and just a good thing to be first at on that one. And that's the extent of my report this evening.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, in terms of the meeting at the Budget Committee, as on, on the 24th of, of June, actually, our, our Metro Commissioner, Carlotta Colette, actually arranged a meeting between Senator Devlin, who's one of the co-chairs, and myself, and also Mayor John Kovesh of, of West Lynn, and recommended, actually, that we, we come and make a presentation. Our presentations are going to only be limited to three minutes, but I think I can do it if, if I've got the appropriate information there before me. Look forward to that meeting. We've just, we've gotten tremendous letters of support on this project from all over the region. I think there's general recognition on the importance of this particular site. Carol Pauli and I this morning actually took a tour of the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center, and they've been doing some great work there. I was very, very impressed. Lot, lot to do still, of course, but I, I'm very impressed with the work they've done, and so I think Clackamas Heritage Partners are, are actually behaving as excellent partners at this point in the game. And that's all I have. And on the floor, anybody else who wants to speak? Commissioner Smith?
Couple announcements, or at least one announcement. Oregon City High School has their spring play, which is next week. It's a children's play, and it's Stuart Little, starts on Wednesday, the 22nd, and goes through the 25th. I believe it starts at 7:30, and that'll be at the main theater at the high school. And I also just wanted to briefly thank all the departments that participated in the Pioneer Festival or helped make that happen. Lot of help from Public Works and Police Department and Parks Department, and it was a beautiful weekend. I got some sun, and it went really well and fairly successful, I think. One of our more successful festivals probably in the last, I've been doing it 15, 16 years, I think. I can only remember one other weekend in that history that it was as nice weather as, as it was. And the last time I remember having nice weather that weekend, it caused all sorts of problems. And, and just, there was an accident on the river that year, there was a bunch of other things happened, all, and nothing really happened over the weekend. Well, I shouldn't say that, but nothing major happened. Everything went fairly smooth, and it's over, which is the best part. So thank you to everyone with that, and I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Not that I can think of. We had self-work meeting.
Yes, we did.
And.
Passed the budget.
Passed the budget, and did our evaluations of our general manager, and everything went good with that, so.
Didn't even make the press.
Didn't even make the press, no.
Anyway.
Not yet, at least.
We have one more comment. Can I make one comment?
I don't see, yeah, you haven't pushed the Biden yet. Yes, Commissioner Mumm.
So one more push, Saturday, 9:30. We're passing out flyers to homes, so join us at Chapin Park, 9:30 Saturday to do canvassing to pass Measure 3-423.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're meeting where again, one more time?
Chapin Park.
Very good. Hearing no others? adjourned.
Ed probably will.